Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Jeffers.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Seelicker.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes of the meeting that was held on June 19th, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes. Distributed to you prior to the meeting was a listing of budget transfers from the finance director, and those transfers need your approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And also distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of June 2017. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special recognitions this evening?
During my report, I will...
Very good. Thank you, sir. At this time, we shift to lobby visitation, where we ask anyone in attendance who is interested to speak to city council to do so at this time. Kay, have we had anyone that has signed our log today?
Yes. First person would be Brad Holmes.
If you are going to address city council, we ask that you approach the microphone and clearly state your name and address for our record, please.
Hello, I'm Brad Holmes. I live at 3278 East Evers. I've been a resident for Bowling Green for over three years now. I'm entering my senior year at BGSU, and I plan to graduate with my bachelor's degree in Policy and Ethics next May. I'm currently also the serving president of the Environmental Action Group, which has been the most environmental-oriented student initiative group in the university over the last 40 years. My involvement in EAG opened the door for me to work with a variety of local efforts aimed at informing the public about potential threats that we could face as a result from the Nexus Pipeline, from its construction and its production processes. The effort provided me with, the effort that provided me with the most opportunity to interact with, with local community members about the issue is the Bowling Green City Charter Amendment ballot initiative, which hopefully many or all of you have heard about. We have been working to gather signatures from Bowling Green residents and registered voters, willing to sign our petition in recognition that it deserves a place as its own issue on the November voting ballot. With circulating this charter amendment, which is designed to grant our citizens and environment legal priority over the interests of corporations seeking to install new transportation, fossil fuel, infrastructure, and city property, I've interacted with over 1,000 community members from the four different wards, and have become very well aware of the varying degrees of awareness that people have toward the issue of the Nexus Pipeline. A vast number of community members have shared viewpoints that they definitely do not want any new fossil fuel infrastructure projects implemented on city property, and they have eagerly signed our petition. A fair amount of others, surprisingly, were not even remotely aware of the proposed Nexus Pipeline plans, nor were they aware of the potential threats to our land, air, and water that its construction could pose on our city. Furthermore, a considerable amount of people have mistakenly, under the impression, have been mistakenly under the impression that the property easement denial in last November, which all seven council members unanimously voted for, simply dismissed the issue and did away with the chance that Bowling Green would have to deal with the Nexus Pipeline running through our property, whether private or municipal. Along with this viewpoint came the general implication that the Bowling Green city officials had the issue of Nexus Pipeline under control, and they'd taken all the necessary steps to ensure it would not be a threat to our well-being of our community and our environment. Sadly, this implication does not seem to be entirely true. Many community members do not realize that we still do face potential threats from Nexus Pipeline. Property easement denial was not the end-all, be-all, and these community members do still expect that city council and city officials are doing whatever that they can to ensure these potential threats do not become harsh realities. We have seen these potential threats turn into harsh realities within the state of Ohio already. Near the end of April of this year, as was brought up in Mayor Edwards' geologist's public forum in May, during only the second week of drilling in the Rover Pipeline construction process, over 2 million gallons of hazardous drilling fluids inadvertently returned to and contaminated natural wetlands in Stark County. In a July 13th email from Ohio EPA Representative Christopher Weiss, to a citizen in Stark County concerned about the potential contamination of her water supply, of which I have copies here for council, Weiss wrote, "While Ohio EPA is still investigating the accidental release of this material, I could tell you the inadvertent return occurred when bisonite slurry used on horizontal-directional drilling escaped through cracks in the formations near the Tuscaloosa River." Weiss went on to write that "Once sent into the ground, drilling fluids should then return through the borehole to where the boring originates, but because the formations have openings where the slurry can escape, these inadvertent returns sometimes occur. Rover Pipeline's damaging construction process, which, as I have been learning, is very similar to process to how Nexus is planned to be built, is a case-in-point example of how these harsh realities are certainly not out of question happening in our own community. Environmental damages as a result of such processes are certainly not out of question, as many geological experts have agreed with. With this in mind, I was excited to hear about recent discussions among different members of council to put together a formal motion to intervene in the Nexus project through the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, otherwise known as FERC. While FERC currently has dozens of Nexus intervention motions to review, the majority have come from concerned citizens and community members, or community groups, but only a small few were from actual Ohio municipalities. Considering this, considering this, I am here to publicly urge the city officials of Bowling Green to come together and file a motion to intervene with Nexus. I'm here to publicly urge all seven members of city council to live up to the community members' expectations that you will do whatever you can to try to protect the well-being of our health and our environment. I'm here to publicly urge Mayor Edwards to take a strong proactive role in leading this very important effort. Without a determined leader seeking to protect our health and environment, such potential threats may turn into harsh realities right here in our own communities. I'm also here to publicly urge City Law Director Marsh to work in unison with the council and Mayor Edwards to provide legal literature that successfully encapsulates the concerns expressed by various Bowling Green citizens, many of which I've actually talked to myself. We all must recognize the political and symbolic importance of filing a motion to intervene in that the Nexus Project truly does serve as a potential source of disaster to our community. However, even if council and other city officials are not willing to work together to submit a motion to intervene, community members like myself will still be working to protect the well-being of our health and environment. For the charter amendment initiative that I discussed before, we are still collecting signatures from Bowling Green residents and registered voters who wish to see our initiative on the November ballot. I do have petitions with me and am willing to stick around after the meeting if anyone wishes to sign or discuss its literature. Council, Mayor Edwards, City Law Director Marsh, and all present, I thank you for your attention. I hope you seriously consider what I've shared today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Karchas. Jennifer Karchas, 407 North Main Street, Bowling Green. Good evening. I'm asking tonight whether the city has decided to file a motion to intervene with FERC to get a revised final environmental impact statement. We were first made aware of the serious issues with the pipeline crossing next to our water treatment plant back in January. I think there has been enough study of the issue to know that this is a problematic area for a pipeline. If there were to be problems installing this pipeline, it would most likely be quite serious for the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant. There are many concerned citizens who would like to see the city take this extra effort to ask FERC to reevaluate the final environmental impact statement, taking into consideration the BG fault being on the surface, the close vicinity of the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant, and the blasting quarry, the features that are not, these features that are not addressed in the current FBIS. To further highlight the risk, there is also the floor report, which was commissioned by Nexus, that states horizontal-directional drilling in this location is high risk, and I quote, "Due to subsurface conditions, the risk level associated with the proposed crossing of the Maumee River is high," end quote. The finding is ignored by Nexus. We would like to see these major issues studied to reevaluate the safety of installing a pipeline in this area. Residents of Bowling Green want to see every reasonable action taken to protect the BG Water Treatment Plant. I have, right here, a, this is a copy of a previously filed motion to intervene, and I will forward on the digital file to the city. I've been advised it would take perhaps a few hours to modify this document to make the city of Bowling Green as the author. There would not be any cost to filing this motion to intervene, except for the few hours of Mr. Marsh's time. If the city is not planning on filing a motion to intervene, I would like to know why. Thank you.
Jennifer, I think the simple answer to your question is, to the best of my knowledge at this point, there is no intent to file the motion that you referred to. I believe that's still an ongoing discussion. I know that Councilmen Zanfordino and Gordon have been mulling over those options, and I believe it's their intent to have further conversations with Mr. Marsh, Mr. Edwards, and myself, though I think that the best way I can characterize that is an ongoing conversation at this point.
Well, I mean, the, we won't have an endless amount of time to discuss this. I think we need to take some action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Neocles Leontis.
Neocles Leontis, 119 North Summit Street. First, I want to thank the city. We arranged on very short notice to take, have a tour with our, we have some of our African leaders here. Bubacar is here, and, and Onyango, and the young lady, right. And we had a group of three of them, and the city kindly arranged a tour. Michael Fields did an excellent job. He gave more than two hours of his time and explained everything, and I left, it's my first tour of the water facility. I left feeling, well, filling a lot of gaps in my knowledge and realizing that we have the best water in the whole state of Ohio. And it's amazing, and it's, and, you know, and I, you know, I like numbers, so I kind of try to quantify that with Darrell and with some other folks, and I understand we have almost $10 million invested there, provide this high-quality product to us. And of course, replacement, well, if it, if anything happened to it, the replacement cost would be about $30 million. These are numbers to put in, you know, to keep things in perspective, and I want to also, I also want to make, last time I spoke here, I spoke a little bit about some possibilities of saving money in the long term by looking into some composting and increasing recycling. I checked with Brian before the meeting to see if I got all my facts right, and I missed some few things, and I want to correct based on what Brian told me. When you include the yard waste that we also recycle, whether we also divert from the landfill, and we, you know, we've effectively turned that into a usable product that people can use, our diversion rate is around 30%. Is that fair to say, Brian? Okay, good. So I want to correct that. Okay. So what I, I have a statement here that I'm sharing with the press, I will share also with the city council. I just passed some copies along. Some of the points were already covered by Brad, and I'm not going to repeat those, and also Jennifer filled in on a few things. I want to talk about some things that, that are new and that offer you avenues for doing your job to protect and defend our water supply that haven't been discussed yet, but which I will try to persuade you can be effective. So first of all, I mean, just to kind of put everything, just to make sure we're all on the same page, what is Nexus? Nexus is a 36-inch, proposed 36-inch, high-pressure, what does high-pressure mean? 100 atmospheres, 1,400 PSI, if you're into the technical side. Transmission line, the transmission lines are always high-pressure, they go over long distances to transmit natural gas. It's going to be built by Enbridge, a Canadian company, to transport primarily our natural gas to Canada and primarily for export, because there really is no, the market internally is quite saturated, which is why oil or gas prices are so low, and that's a fact I've confirmed with a lot of reading this weekend. Okay, so what I want to point out is that there is something you can do, because it's not just FERC that decides whether a pipeline gets built. The federal EPA has delegated to state EPAs the authority to issue water, what is called a Section 401 Water Quality Certification, and Isolated Wetlands Permit. And if Ohio EPA denies that permit, then Nexus cannot be built, and that's something that's not been discussed yet. So this is a point of action and that can be, that can be acted on. Now, this, they've already made their application back in October, and the decision is going to be made in August, so there's not a lot of time to act. And of course, to do this, we need to use all our heavy hitters, so we need to turn to our politicians, our political leaders at the federal and state level, and ask for their assistance, as well as citizens, of course, can write, city council can write, and call, et cetera, so we have to pull out all the stops to protect our water. Okay, now, can, can this work? Well, in fact, it has worked in other states. For example, the New York Department of Environmental Conservation, which I think is effectively their EPA, has denied these water permits for two pipelines, the Constitution Pipeline last year and the Northern Access this year. And they said that FERC disregarded the department's concerns, and so they're issuing this, this ruling, and based on their experiences with gas pipeline construction, they've concluded that significant degradation of water quality in stream after stream occurs. Okay, I've circulated a map, there's copies that I've circulated, and we have extras for people to take. This map, which we presented before, but we want to present it again, shows where this pipeline is supposed to go according to the plans, and in spite of all the strong letters that our mayor has sent, that others have sent to them, they've not made the least effort to reroute it. Okay? This pipeline is very close to the water treatment plant, it's planned to go there. I don't think it's actually city property, like Brad said, but it is, property is right adjoining to our, and it also crosses the Bowling Green Seismic Fault, and there was a big discussion about that, and so I refer you to that discussion, and that occurs right next to our, our thing. So with regard to transmission lines, these high-pressure transmission lines do have accidents. Overall, they're fairly safe, but they do have accidents. And I looked up, you know, on the website of the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration of the Department of Transportation to find some statistics between, over the last 20 years, 1997 to the last, 2016, there have been, for the, just for the transmission pipelines, there have been 2,000 incidents, and they've cost almost $2 billion of damage. That's about $1 million per incident. Some of the incidents were fairly minor. That's much more damage per incident than you get from distribution lines. The distribution lines are the ones that go through the city and go to the houses, I mean, they can have, can have damage there too, but it's much less, significantly less. So because these pipelines are under so much pressure, the blast, the blast radius is very large, it's almost half a mile large, and what this figure shows is that our water treatment plant is within the blast zone should something happen. You know, of course, it's low probability, but it's a high, it's a high damage. Okay, and I just want to remind you that we take small percentage, you know, probabilities very seriously when it comes to a very serious consequence. Okay, and I just want to point something out. 0.1% probability of something happening, it sounds like it's something very low, but that's about what the probability of your house burning down is, and you all buy insurance. Is there anybody, unless you're independently wealthy, you don't care if your house burns down, you all buy insurance. There are 30,000 flights per day. 0.1% is 30 flights. If 30 flights crashed every day, 0.1%, would anybody put their grandchildren on an airplane? So low percentages by themselves don't mean anything, you have to look at the consequence, and a consequence of a serious accident is that we lose our water supply, and then we have to drink Toledo water. Can you imagine? That was supposed to be the last one, but it didn't. Okay, so, that's, that's, that's what we're talking about here. Now, who is building the, so we already had a little bit of discussion about the companies building it, I just want to emphasize that this company has now been bought. Spectra Energy first started the process, but now they've been bought by Endrich, and Endrich Energy is the same company that was responsible for the Kalamazoo River oil spill, one of the worst in the country a couple of years ago. I'm sure you've all heard about that. Not only did they have a horrible spill, but they did a lot of cover-up, they didn't clean up the way they're supposed to, they avoided responsibility, so they're not a nice company. Endrich is also involved with the Rover Pipeline, which is currently being built, and already Brad talked about that a little bit, I'm not going to go into details, but there has been pollution in the drilling process, so we're not only talking about after the pipeline's built, we're talking about also when you build a pipeline, especially when you build it close to the intakes of water systems, there is the possibility of pollution, in almost likelihood, because the rock is so porous where they intend to drill. Brad already talked about that, I'm not going to go into more details about that. So I just want to conclude by saying that we need to pull out all the stops, and we need to challenge our political leaders, I'm going to name names, we need to challenge Representative Bob Latta at the federal level, Senator Randy Gardner at the State House, he's been there for years and years, okay? Teresa Gardner hasn't, Teresa Gavron hasn't been there as long, but she could get involved as well. Okay? I don't want to point out that both Latta and Gardner accept contributions from the fossil fuel industry. This is their chance to show that our well-being is at the top of their priorities and not serving the people that give them campaign contributions. Okay? But they need to hear from you, and they need to hear from you. They need to stand up for us. They drink the same water, their families live here, and they drink the same water. Are they going to protect, are they going to work with us to protect our water supply? That's the key question, and there's no ands, ifs, or buts about it. We either do it, or we don't. I'm offering one more approach through the Ohio EPA, and it's, I'm not saying that don't do the FERC thing, that's a good idea too, but we have to use all the tools at our disposal to solve this problem. So thank you very much.
Just a quick question, Neocles.
I can take any questions, yeah.
What's the actual mechanism for the Ohio EPA to withhold approval? I mean, it wouldn't be...
They need to hear from people and say, "Look, it's going here, we're concerned about the," you know. The mayor wrote a wonderful letter listing all the problems, he's got it all, he's got it. Let's make sure that that gets transmitted from as many people as possible, but especially from our political leaders to Ohio EPA. They are close to us, and again, in other states, they have listened to the people on this issue. The FERC is unfortunate, it's a captive agency, it's populated by people who hope to get jobs in the gas industry and the oil industry after they leave, that's what the record shows, okay, they do do that, so it's, it's not, you know, the success there is going to be more difficult. And there, I don't know, I think the solution is to abolish it and start all over, once we get a congress that sees things that way. Okay? But in the meantime, at the Ohio, at the Ohio level, we can, we can act, we have, they're closer to us, and so, well, that's a part of the federal system. And in other states, they have listened, in New York, they have listened to people. We have to give it a try. That's answered your question, John?
Uh, dials, thanks, Neocles. Sure. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, are there others? Very good. Thank you all for your comments. We move forward on our agenda to official reports. Mr. Mayor, would you please lead us off this evening?
Thank you very much. It's good to be with you this evening, and first, I just want to start by something we probably would, should have taken care of earlier in July, but I do want something to be read into the record, I'm looking at Kristin Ottley here, because we've been enjoying, we're now about more than halfway through the month, but we've been enjoying the, some of the wonderful benefits of our parks and recreation system and our president here. Jeff, I'll be asking you to come up in just a minute to, Jeff Crawford, in the back there, our president of our Parks and Recreation Board, but this is simply a proclamation calling to the attention of our community that this is Parks and Recreation Month, and I really, I won't go through all the whereases and so forth, but because it's all good things, but I really like this one particular sentence here, and I, every time I, I read it, I like to emphasize and so forth, "Because whereas it is the right, the right of everyone, regardless of age, race, color, religion, gender, ability, or national origin, to participate in parks and recreation programs and activities, and enjoy parks and open space." And then I say, now therefore, in my role as mayor, proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, and, and joining with citizens of other communities throughout the great state of Ohio and doing this. We are, we all know, we can't say it enough, though. One of the great assets of our community happens to be our parks and all of our recreational programs, our nature trails, and I'm delighted that, I'm going to call some of our guests forward, but I know some of them have had a chance to even go out and see the Simpson Garden Park, and to walk through there and enjoy it and so forth, but we know it's a real blessing for our community as a whole to have our parks, and so, Jeff, if you would like to receive this, on behalf of your Parks and Recreation Board...
Ms. Ali, if she wants to stand up too, but Jeff, I want to thank you for your leadership and all that you and the other members of the board are doing to enhance our total park and recreation system here. Next, members of council and all assembled, I'm really pleased tonight that at least we have three representatives of the Mandela Washington Fellowship for Young African Leaders, and it's been a civic leadership institute at Bowling Green State University, it's been going on now for a few weeks. This last Wednesday, some of us had the, the great opportunity, and what a marvelous experience it was, to sit in this room and to be with most of the Mandela Fellows, and we sat around the table and we exchanged ideas. They asked a lot of questions, but we asked questions of them. It was exhilarating, quite frankly, and because it really brought to the fore, of course, that which we know, but to hear it on a direct, personal basis, the rich diversity of, among the African countries, the nations of Africa, on the continent of Africa, there are differences, there are similarities, but we heard some, some wonderful stories and some points of reference at that time. And at this particular time, if you would be so kind, the three of you, if you would please come forward, and I would like for you just to introduce yourselves to all assembled here, and to tell about what you do back home, and, and also which country, of course, that you represent, so, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, while they're coming up, can I interject that I learned that they, the 25 here from Bowling Green are part of 65,000 entrants to get this Mandela Washington Fellowship...
I think, I had even heard the number 100,000, so I don't know, I just know that...
I like yours.
This is an amazing story, which, if you would please come forward. We've had a chance to meet before, but it's just so wonderful to have you here again. Thank you. And I'm honored to see you again. Thank you for seeing. Please, just identify yourself and where you're from, and what you possibly do back home. Would that be okay? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Onyango Ojuangboz, I'm from Kenya, and I'm, I'm an environmentalist by profession, and I have a small organization that deals with environmental education in primary schools and in the village, so I'm very privileged to be here, and I thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, my name, thank you. Okay, my name is Chenai, and I'm from Zimbabwe. We are three Zimbabweans who came for this civic track, but they didn't come. There's actually 1,000 Africans across America right now in, I think, 39 institutions, and we're here specifically for civic, but others are here for business or public management or energy management. Okay, in Zimbabwe, I work in a microfinance organization, and I, I co-run a program that empowers girls and young women between the ages of 13 to 25. We give them education grants, and we have a complimentary mentorship program that gives them the soft skills that they don't get from the traditional education system. Most of the girls in my program are from rural areas and from childhooded families or women-led families, and really what we're trying to do is to have a few success stories in those areas that will then be able to give the younger ones an example and push them forward to be able to know that there are opportunities for them out there in the nation. And thank you for being a very welcoming community, by the way.
And were you the winner of the speaking contest?
No, no, that was in the stage.
I always think that you were the one that was the winner. I apologize again, I said that to you before.
I think I really need to put it up. First of all, my name is Bubacar Diallo, I'm from Guinea-Conakry, that's in West Africa, and thank you so much, really, for having us here, and I think just to really see all of you, like, interact with your, like, your leaders in the community is already awesome. Like, I've never had any chance to interact with my city officials, like, and this is like, like, great to see, like, an example of a community where everyone is involved and people participate, so thank you so much, really, for giving that example. So part of what, the reason why we're here is to really learn, like, from the, the community and go back home to really start implementing the same way, maybe depending on context as well. So I have founded an organization called Action First, which promotes youth volunteering, community development, and protecting the environment. community development, and protecting the environment. So, I've had a great experience here in Bowling Green, like, people are welcoming, and the environment is great, and I look forward, really, with all the comments I've heard about the pipeline, just to, you know, like, it was amazing. We went there, we saw, like, the water plant, so it's amazing. Thank you so much, guys. Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to, a small observation I made. My country, Kenya, recently we constructed railways, railway line. It's called standard gauge. And before the construction of that railway line, we had a very contentious debate on where that railway line is actually going to pass. So, people came with petitions, and we tried to lobby the government and even National Environmental Management Authority, that is doing the same function as EPA over here. But then, it's like our advocacy and our lobbying didn't do much good. And the final thing, the railway line was constructed and it went straight into our national park, Nairobi National Park. So, already, we've started having impacts. The lions are running from the park because of the sound, and also the biodiversity that originally thrived there is already being lost. So, I encourage you, when it comes to the matter of environment, just be vigilant and try all means of getting it the right way. Because if you don't get it the right way, then it will fight back. And when it fights back at us, then we'll not be in a position to protect ourselves. So, do anything you can to make sure that you get it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say, on Saturday evening of this week, at the Simpson Garden Park Building, we had another very, very special event that was uplifting and speaks well of our community. And that's the, celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Horizon Youth Theater. And I had an opportunity on your behalf to do a proclamation and to say some words there and to express appreciation. I said, "It was just so much fun to be in a gathering where the focus was on the arts." And it's something that's near and dear to a lot of our hearts. And this was a wonderful example, of course, of the theater arts, but it also speaks well of the visual arts, the musical arts, the performing arts, generally speaking. And so, it was a great night of celebration there, very spirited, as you might guess. And I just wanted to remind you, and you know this, but when you peel back the layers of history and most any kind of good effort and so forth, and invariably, some names stand out of people that were willing to step up and to demonstrate leadership. And that's certainly the case with Dr. Scott Regan and also Dr. Beth Gonzalez. The two of them really made this happen 20-some years ago, and they've turned it on, passed it on to others and so forth, but they were honored there on Saturday night. It was a very, very thoughtful time. It was a wonderful occasion, and I just wanted you to know that I was there on your behalf and so forth. The other thing I would like to mention, just to remind you that I've shared this with you before, this is this wonderful logo that Amy Karlovic did for the Wester Green. I hope you all can see it. I feel like maybe she down at Four Corners, walking around with something like this. But we are having a special information sharing session, a chance to review the two basic concepts for the Wester Green this Wednesday at the Wood County District Public Library in a meeting room there on the main floor. And you'll hear from members of the Steering Committee and others who have been involved in this process over the years. It's not something that we all know. It's been, and you know better than anyone else, it's gone on for three or more years here, and there are some people in this room that certainly understand that as well. But in any event, this, for me, every time I look at it, it speaks volumes, so I really appreciate all the good work. I just want to say one additional thing, and I hadn't planned to say anything tonight, so I, I'll try to be somewhat brief, but... I just want to share with you, this is enough to choke a horse. These are my personal files on the Nexus issue. And some of you have made some very substantial contributions to it, which I appreciate. I can't tell you the number of letters, phone calls, and other things that I've been engaged in. I've learned a great deal. I also just got something today from Niklas. And incidentally, Niklas, this is very, very informative. It's kind of dramatic. It happened to be on, we didn't, we are regular listeners of NPR, but we didn't hear it this morning unless Nadine did, and, but she keeps me posted on a lot of this. But this is one of the best things I've seen, quite frankly. And I've, needless to say, have looked at a lot of stuff, and this doesn't include all the other stuff I've been doing online and so forth. Recently, I had a chance, had an in-depth, lengthy conversation with the mayor of Green City. Green City is that vast area, really, in many respects vast area, between Akron and North Canton. It encompasses the Akron-Canton Airport. It encompasses a huge industrial park. It encompasses one, a worldwide corporation with over 2,200 employees. There are four zip codes in the city. It used to be a township, but it became a city in 1994, '95, as I recall. The mayor and I, he's, is an engineer, an undergraduate, master's in business. He's new to his position. He has spent an enormous amount of time on this issue, as I have, and I know many others have done the same thing. They're a very wealthy community because of all the things that I've just identified there. He told me, he said, "Frankly, money is not a problem right now for us." So, they've been able to earmark $150,000 for this, for basic legal fees. And he said it could go well beyond that. He said that the, as I've heard from other, even some national people that I've checked, the declaration of intent, the intent to intervene is not, as has been described here, and they're absolutely right on. It's not a complicated legal document. I'm speaking as a non-lawyer. It's not expensive to do that. It's what comes afterwards, once you're in. And this is what, this is why Green City has hired Jones Day, one of the top law firms in the whole state of Ohio. They were able to get $25,000 to, from the commissioners of Summit County to help in this process. He said, "I don't know what our chances are." His taking on the federal government is monumental. He said, "I like to think because it is really bisecting their city." It's not. Ours, even though some statements are made, "Yes, I worry about the proximity to our water treatment plant." That's absolutely right on. We all should be concerned about that because we're the proximity. But it's not bisecting, dissecting, interfering with our city proper. And over there, it's interfering with their parks, with their, also their, this really large, that's immediately adjacent to the Akron-Canton Airport, their industrial park, which has been really quite successful. I've only been over there just once recently, and, but we had a good chat. In fact, he even said, "Maybe we should meet." Maybe, I said, "Well, let's meet halfway," you know, possibly, and compare notes, and so that we still might be able to do something. I've also checked with the city of Oberlin. They have a new, they're a city manager, former government. They do not have a mayor. The city manager is just new on the job. And he and I have spent some time, and he encouraged us to be in touch with their law director, which Mr. Marsh, to his credit, once again, has tried time and time again to get through to that particular law director there. The city council in Oberlin dedicated $10,000, and they said, "We just don't have the kinds of resources." But they agreed after executive session here about three weeks ago, because it is cutting into the city of Oberlin, a place that I happen to know a little bit about and visited just recently at Oberlin College. But, and so, it's not going through the heart of the city, but it is cutting across, I believe it's the northeast corner of the city. So, they have some concerns, but they, they said, you know, "I don't know what we can do with $10,000, but at least city council over there put aside $10,000 for it." I've talked with the mayor of Waterville, and of course, their municipal administrator, Lori Tretter's counterpart there, Jim Bagdonas, a lot of us know Jim. And they're not really doing anything over there, other than that they hope that, and it becomes a legal constitutional issue and so forth, and whether or not they could actually deny giving a building permit, such as Niklas made reference to over there. So, I just want to, I really appreciate the sincerity of everyone, what we've been hearing. I take it all very seriously. As some of you know, we've all worked hard at this, and I appreciate the staff, what they've been doing to be helpful. I appreciate very much the inputs from members of council. We've tried to look at it in a variety of ways. I'm frankly not giving up at all. I have, I'll be talking, Niklas has mentioned a couple of our officials, but I really am counting more on Senator Brown and Senator Portman. I'm working through their staff. They each have environmental specialists on their respective staff there, and I know some members of each of their staffs, but they said, "You got to talk to so and so." And that's, I have that coming up this week, too. I guess there's much more I could say. I'm also, and Niklas, I want you to know, please, one of the frustrations of the mayor of Green City said is the Ohio EPA. He has, he said, "I have tried everything under the sun." And Mary Taylor, their lieutenant governor, is from Green City. And he said, "It's been very, very frustrating." Now, he said, "To the EPA's credit, they have, they've not been able to act thus far in a preemptive way, but in a reactive way." And of course, what they've done with the Rover, I said, "Yeah, those, the magnitude of those fines." Now, those would cause any municipal government, especially the size of ours, it would do us in, you know. But he said, "You got to understand, with these pipeline companies, they don't even feel it. They have so much money they're dealing with. They're now paying, over in Green, $230 a foot for a pipeline." He said, "Can you believe that?" Because they started out somewhere around $30 there. So, money is, you know, on that side of the ledger is absolutely no problem whatsoever. I'm continuing to hope to, to, to talk to Craig Butler, our director of the Ohio EPA. Curiously, we've not heard, I mean, I'm sending letters, I haven't even had a simple acknowledgement. I'll just tell you, straight up, you know, which is, at least you like to get a formal letter back and say, "Thank you," you know. So, we're continuing to press, and I've reached out, of course, to Senator Gardner in that regard as well, because of the kind of clout he has there in Columbus. And of course, we've got the EPA right here, at a regional office right here in Bowling Green. And I don't know what, if they can't speak or they want to, you know, whatever the situation is, but we have not heard from them at all. And maybe Brian O'Connell has, but they're really good people. They, they're well aware of the millions you've identified. I would say, you said 10 million, I would say maybe even more, who knows? But it's a huge input of federal, state, and local dollars. I want to emphasize, local dollars, that have gone into our water treatment plant, because it is one of the very, very best. I mean, this is why some of us were concerned about messing around a little bit with the, with the funding mix for public utilities, because of what we've been able to accomplish over the many years there. And it's an independent body, so it's something we can all share in. Well, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. I'm sorry to, but obviously, as some of you know, I mean, and I know some of you have reached, have put a lot of time into this as well. I've certainly been digging away. I've, I'm willing to keep fighting, plugging away on this. I'm also very mindful, having taught government, I know, understand the federal government and the power of the federal government over state governments, and it's, that's the way it is. And, but I think this article really highlight, this wonderful program on NPR, really highlighted the complexities involved and the fact that no matter how much, you know, here I am, I'm speaking euphemistically, energy you put into it, but it's a tough, a tough go. Now, you've shared something about what's been done in New York State. I saw some big reference to that in here, but I've not, I'm not familiar, I have, with that particular section, that where the federal government EPA can delegate some responsibilities to a state EPA. And I'd be very much interested in hearing more about that and discussing that with Mr. Butler as well. I also, just as a final note, I just want to say that the panel that we put together, I feel so good about that panel because of their independence. They spoke, and the kind of professionalism that they demonstrated, and their expertise, and one of the panelists, Steve Champa, I continue to hear from. He is sending us, us meaning Brian O'Connell and Daryl Stockburger and other members of the staff, and Lori and I, of continuing periodic references of what's happening in the state with the Rover pipeline. He's deeply concerned about that situation and the kind of damages that have been done to the waterways, some of the waterways in southeastern Ohio. And so, we are building file, a case, a trail, giving it the old college try, and we'll keep plugging away. Thank you. If you have any questions, I mean...
I just have a comment. Mayor, thanks so much for bringing all your material with you tonight, and I can, of course, see how frustrated you are with this. I just wanted to say thanks for your comment that the motion to intervene, per se, is probably not that expensive, and, you know, it's what comes after that could run into tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I guess, you know, the question before us still is, do we do the MTI as a, as has been suggested, as a, as a single action? And that if something then does happen catastrophically down the road, does that indeed give us more legal recourse than multiple letters? So, I guess that's still a question.
And my answer, John, is I don't know. I'll let Mr. Marsh speak to that point. I've listened to the mayor of Green, and as I've said, and he told me that basically, once you're in, you got to go in a long haul, and that's why they appropriated so much money for it over there, knowing all the potential damage to their, that city over there, and they do have the resources. So, that's, he was just saying, "It's hard to put your big toe in the water and then pull it out," you know, and just say, and that's from a lay perspective, that's what I, but, but I know Mr. Marsh has talked with other, his fellow attorneys and on this issue. And Mike, would you care to offer any comment?
I think we talked about this...
When did you meet? It's been a month, I guess, hasn't it? You don't get to intervene in a case and then leave. Federal judges don't like that. If you're in, you're in. I think what I mentioned to you was, the law firm that we have conversed with has said that if we want to have some sort of limited role, they would be willing to fashion some sort of a letter or something for us compiling all of our arguments and submitting that. But intervene means you're there. That means you participate from then on. That's what intervene means. It doesn't mean it's just a different way to correspond. That's not what it is. It's saying, "Here comes the city of Bowling Green, and we want to join this case." That's a significant...
That's a significant financial commitment that I can't recommend after talking to the Voorhees firm. They told me that it would be a minimum of $150,000 and probably $250,000. I don't have that in my budget. I can't commit that. I don't know if you folks can identify where we can come up with that kind of money. So that's why I presented to you as an option. If you think it carries more weight to come from a law firm, to have that firm basically do what the mayor's been doing. I mean, I share his frustration with some of this. He asked me to deal with the Ohio EPA and to see if we could get Senator Gardner's help. And he has been willing to help us with this, but we can't. It's, it's, I shouldn't laugh, but it's almost comical. We can't get the Ohio EPA, who probably called Brian already about our sewers overflowing last week. We probably already heard from him about that. But, but we can't, we can't seem to shake the right tree down there and even get anybody interested, let alone take a position. Now, maybe that in itself is an answer, if you know what I'm saying. I, it could be. But that would be helpful. And that was recommended by the Voorhees firm to see if we could get state agencies involved. Because they were quite open and honest with me. They said, you're not, you'll spend 250,000 on us and we'll take your money, but you won't win. And that was the other thing that bothered me is that the likelihood of being successful in the litigation part of this is pretty thin. Unless we can get some help from some of our own agencies. So that's why we took the tact we've taken for the last two or three months. And I think Senator Portman and Senator Brown are pretty important in this.
Sure. The letter that a law firm could perhaps compile, was there a price put on that?
Yeah, 15,000.
15,000, okay.
We talked about that, didn't we?
I remember that number, we're hearing that part, but.
I think he said, I think he said 10 to 15,000. 10 to 15,000. And, you know, he was honest about that. He said, all I'm gonna do is compile information you've already given them. But, you know, that, that is an option that's, I guess, affordable. Although, to be honest with you, I don't have that in my budget either. But, you know. That answer the question, I don't even remember who had it now.
Related question, I don't know if it's for you or the mayor. When we had the geological experts here, their bottom line was that they would like to see additional engineering boring studies. I wonder if we could, I don't know how you do this, approach NEXUS directly? Or I don't know if it's a FERC thing, but you try to get additional studies done? That would make us a lot more confident.
I don't know if the mayor feels this way, but, but I think if you wanted to do that, we would have to do it. Because I haven't had any luck getting anybody from NEXUS to talk to me. Have you, I mean, I.
And we did in our, in our, our letters to NEXUS saying, we thought, and I even cited the panel, the need for additional geotech studies and surveys. And because that was highlighted and Lisa, to her credit, has highlighted it with the FLUR report that was submitted to NEXUS. And those words are correct from there, saying it's, it's a source of concern. And so it represents a potential risk there and for a variety of reasons. And so that's all been submitted to NEXUS and I've raised it, reinforced it with my letters there too. So, so I, I'm not, you know, saying that, you know.
I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's become apparent that they've taken a position. They're not going to comment or respond to anything. They're just waiting for FERC to do whatever FERC does next. And I think they probably believe that if they say too much, they might jeopardize their own position. They, they don't want to negotiate against themselves.
Could we hire somebody to drill, study this?
I, you certainly could. Actually, one of the biggest companies in the world that does this is in Toledo. What are they called now? It used to be called Toll Test, but I, TTL.
Any idea about price for that?
Oh, I don't. Yeah, I do.
Mike, I.
Yeah, I have somewhere where they could do it too. I mean, obviously, they could drill on our property, but I couldn't speak for anybody else, I guess.
Mike, I kind of got a mixed voice signal from you about the letter. You said it would be expensive for a letter, $10,000.
You're paying for their letterhead, that's what it amounts to. And it's, and it's a sizable reputation, I mean.
They are well represented in Washington, from what I know.
Oh, yeah, they.
Washington knows them.
Voorhees, Sater, Seymour and P, they're the largest law firm in Ohio.
Yeah.
They're, they've been helpful to us in other things. We've used them before, yeah. But whether or not it carries any more weight in something like this, I don't know. I can't speak to that.
That's what I was going to ask you. Do you think it's worth 10,000?
It isn't going to be any new information. It's just compiled by someone else. So if, if the job is just to make a record so that if something bad happened, we can say, I told you so. We've probably already done more than anybody else has done, including Waterville, where it's going to go right through their town. They're not, they're not doing anything like this guy's doing, trust me.
So do I hear you saying that's a too expensive way to get, to do something more?
I've read between the lines when I was talking to the fellow. I mean, he was offering an option and I don't think he really thought that it was worth doing it that way. That's, but I guess I'd have to let him say that. Like I said, this would not involve them compiling new research or anything else. Person I talked to is an engineer and an attorney. He's the lead partner in this part of their office. And he told me from what he knew of the project, it would probably be approved. And that being within 700 feet of our water plant is probably not statistically a problem from an engineering standpoint. Just telling you what he said.
Well, I do know they work with federal government stuff. They have big reputation in Washington.
Can you really put a price tag on water?
No, that's why we're doing what we're doing. There's, there's been a lot of time and effort and money put into that water plant. By our community for probably 50 years now. And it was a struggle for a long time. Wasn't always as good as it is now. And we got it where people wanted it to be 30 years ago. So, yeah, we're, we're real interested in protecting it. There's no lack of effort coming from the, along the wall on this, that's for sure.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. And I thank you also, Mr. Mayor. Our next report comes from our municipal administrator, Ms. Tredder.
Good evening. Wanted to follow up with you on our inspection process for golf carts. We said we would circle back with you on that legislation that you passed, once we had that in place. So thanks to Chief Hetrick, we have additional information. So as of July 19th, owners of registered golf carts will be allowed to operate the carts on 25 mile an hour roadways excluding Maine and Worcester. Per the legislation that was passed in the city of Bowling Green. However, you need to be registered. And to get registered, golf carts must first be inspected by a law enforcement officer and conform to the equipment requirements for motor vehicles as described in the Ohio Revised Code. You can find that specific information if you go to our website, go to the police division, they have a link there for you. So we've set up two opportunities upcoming for people to have free inspections by the city of Bowling Green. No appointment is necessary at either of these inspections. It'll be on a first come, first served basis. So the first event is going to take place in the parking lot of the Stone Ridge Golf Course on Muirfield Drive. That's going to be on Saturday, July 29th, from 8 until noon. If you can't make that one, we'll be at the Bowling Green Country Club on Fairview Avenue the next Saturday, August 5th, from noon until 4:00 PM. And again, all this information is on the police division's website. If you're not able to make either of those, then you can contact the police division to make an appointment. But we would encourage people who are wanting to get those inspections to try to make one of those two events if possible. And again, see our website for additional details or clarification. So that's the, the end of, kind of the cycle there on that legislation that you implemented here, folks. And that's all I had to report on this evening, subject to your questions.
Questions for Lori. Very good, thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. A few updates. We do have a date, so if you could please save this date for the Community Action Plan draft to come out, which will be Tuesday, September 12th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Wood County District Public Library in the atrium. It will be an open house style, so anybody can come between that two hour period. We will also have copies of the draft plan there. Once the plan is ready, we're going to have it available around September 1st. So you have a little bit of time to review that before the open house. In addition to that, there will be a comment period of probably a few weeks after that too. So just want to let you know, there'll be plenty of time to review that once it is completed. Also, we'll of course have it on our website. Another update, permits are definitely a little bit higher this year. We're at 217 so far for zoning permits and 20 single family housing starts compared to 18 at this time last year and 192 permits. Also want to let you know, a group of us representing the city and the university will be attending the Ohio Town and Gown Summit next week. We will be gone for a couple of days for that, which is in Oxford at Miami University. So we'll, we'll be excited to bring back some of our discussions and ideas. And we also are part of a panel called Building a Better Community With Intention. So we'll talk a lot about our partnerships between the city and university. So a lot of great things happening and we're looking forward to that. Otherwise, if you have any questions, happy to answer them. And next year, yes, it will be in Bowling Green. So we definitely will need the community to help us do that. We actually haven't formally announced that to the other state colleges and universities and cities. That it's going to be in Bowling Green. We'll do that at the summit next year with, or next week, hopefully with the video. To kind of little, build a little momentum and say, oh, by the way, here's the video and here's where it's at. So we'll be excited to announce that.
Great. Questions for Heather.
Was that August 12th or September 12th?
September 12th, it's a Tuesday. So plenty of time to get on your calendar, we hope.
Thank you, Heather. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
We've been talking about a lot of serious stuff, so it's good timing to have the park report. So in all seriousness, thank you, Mayor Edwards, for the proclamation. We didn't have the first meeting in July, so we couldn't do that. And park board has not occurred yet this month either. I'm a little competitive, so I do want to underscore the fact that it is a whole month, not a day, not a week, a whole month for parks and recreation. Because that's how important parks are. So with that, summer is flying by. In fact, Superintendent Scrooge is not here, but school starts a month from today. But never fear, there's still a lot of summer activities going on. And one just announced, we had, we've had a lot of basketball camps and programs this summer. I wouldn't normally highlight them, but this one just got worked out. We were partnering with Vito Brown, former Bowling Green High School player and another Big Ten institution alumni as well from Wisconsin. But he is putting on a basketball camp for youth entering grades three through 12, July 29th. So I do have a flyer here, but that information is getting out and we're very happy to partner with him on that. Should be exciting. There are two more lunches left, lunches in the park and one more concert. So summer is flying by, please take advantage. Next Wednesday, July 26th, and I have flyers on this, is the return of the Zucchini 500 at the farmer's market. Last year with the new operation of the farmer's market, there was not communication there about this interesting and fun event. So we are bringing that back. That is open and free to anyone. Bring your own zucchini and check out our website for all the rules. It's fun, it's not super competitive, but a little bit. Lots of camps left and events, check out our website. And there was information in the press, but I do want to, because of the timing, remind people that Bike Safety Commission typically does not meet in July. And that is true this year. So we are not meeting here tomorrow night at 6:00. Do not come because we won't be here. So we will resume in August. And that is all that I have, unless you have questions of me.
Questions for Kristen. Thank you.
Thanks.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
You're going to get the law department golf cart from Sparta. You're the first one to lie.
Thank you for that. Utility Director, Mr. O'Connell.
As was mentioned before, we give a tour to some of the Mandela Washington fellows on Saturday at our water plant. They're also interested in visiting our wastewater plant. So I think we're going to try to get them out there sometime this week and to spend some more time with utility staff to ask some questions and have some dialogue with them before they leave Bowling Green area. That's all I have, unless you have other questions.
Questions for Brian.
Did you learn anything about utility functions in Africa that might apply?
I, I hope to, when I get more, more time to, to talk with them. They, they have an interesting way. I spoke with the one, I forget her name now, she was an engineer, so, you know, I could communicate. But I didn't get a lot of time to talk with her. I hope to talk with her more this week about how they set up their operations and their facilities. So we have a, here's to learn more about, you know, what, what it's like in their country and how it differs from here. And we can share some ideas and maybe I can learn some things from them. And in part, I could hear some of our processes with them as well. It'd be a good discussion.
Do you know officially how much rain we got in Bowling Green last Monday and Tuesday?
It was over five inches. You know, that's, that's a tremendous amount of rain for us. If you go to, if you look at the pond that's east of I-75, just north of Copper Beach area, right there at the Dunbridge and Worcester intersection area. One of the county engineer employees who deals with drainage, because he's, he's never seen that pond that high. He went and looked at it and it literally was at the, at the top of his bank. I mean, any more water and it would have been going out into the farm field. There just was nowhere for the water to go. We went down to the Porch River, which is where that pond outlets to, and it was flooded. The outlet pipe that takes the water from our, from the city on that side of town was buried underwater. No place for it to go. It was just too much water. Thankfully, the, the next day, we did get some rain, but not as much as they were predicting. We have gotten less than an inch that very next day. We had some flooding issues on South Main Street. We did not have those the day, the next day. But we had enough time to get some water out of town. But really, we're, we're at the mercy of the ditches and the way that the drainage system works. It was built years ago for this area and there's really not much, not much we can do other than wait and pray that it stops, unfortunately.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
The Poe Fairview Signal is complete. One advantage there, I think you'll see, especially when school starts, is they'll be a protected left turn for like a lot of those school buses that are heading south. They'll have a chance to clear the intersection before they get people coming at them from, head northbound. I will see how that works. Napoleon Road, the concrete work is done. Shelley has the base course down. They're going to hold off a little bit in conjunction with their work they're doing on Connyot. That started recently doing some concrete work on Connyot. Public Works is rapidly trying to finish up this sidewalk on the north end of Fairview there at Poe. Got about four more homes to go. We'll get that done and then get out of the way for Shelley to get on Fairview as well. North Main Newton, if you see any work there, contractor is putting in some PED poles. And that will also put in a protected left turn at North Main Newton. If you see the Betco folks get out or anybody wants to go northbound on 25, that protected left turn will really help move traffic when that gets completed. Once the PED poles are done, Pub Works will go in there and we're going to put some ADA ramps in there, make that intersection. to put some, um, ADA ramps in there, make the intersection connected. Right now, it's only a sidewalks and, uh, two of the four corners. So we'll get that completed and tie that in with the sidewalk system. Uh, Manville-Troup Waterline was recently bid. Uh, Bee Hills is the apparent little bidder and they plan on starting work on Manville Waterline in early August. It will start about Third Street and head south towards Napoleon. And then they'll move over to Troup Street and do both blocks of Troup from Worcester to, um, Scott Hamilton. And last but not least, uh, a salt update. Uh, ODOT had the bid openings for salt statewide and Wood County is, uh, uh, going to be supplied by Cargill. And, uh, we submitted our, um, proposal for about 600 tons. We're pretty much full since we didn't use very much last year. Uh, the numbers came in at $34.44 a ton, which is about $5 cheaper than the year before that, which was about $10 cheaper than the year before that. So we're trending in the direction. I think Mother Nature has as much to do with that as anything. So that's my report. And if you have any questions, me.
Questions for Brian. Thank you, Brian. That concludes our official reports. We move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McCumber.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Municipal Employees Association and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. President.
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. President.
Ms. Rowland.
I, I have an ordinance from the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract or contracts for the renovation of the Nature Center at Winter Garden St. John's Nature Preserve and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Planning, Zoning and Economic Development Committee, have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.03, 150.37C, 150.45C, and 150.59A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding vocation, training, school use in the city's zoning code. I'd like to set this for public hearing August 21st at 6:45. And, uh, resolution to approve agreements and authorize the municipal administrator to sign the agreements between the city of Bowling Green and Moser Construction Incorporated provide incentives available for project development in the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number Six.
Thank you, Bruce. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Uh, we did have a brief public hearing to, uh, deal with, uh, zoning designation, uh, for the properties just east of Woodbridge Park. And that'll be on our list tonight.
Thanks, Bruce. Additional council committee reports. Thank you. Uh, let's proceed to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3673 for first reading. Resolution to approve agreements and authorize the municipal administrator to sign agreements between the city of Bowling Green and Moser Construction Incorporated to provide incentives available for project development in the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number Six. Ordinance Number 8612 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Municipal Employees Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McCumber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8612 at second and third reading.
Tag it. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8612.
President.
Mr. McCumber.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8612.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8612.
Mr. President.
Mr. McCumber.
I move to adopt ordinance 8612.
Tag it. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just to briefly mention, this is the third, uh, union contract we've had, uh, to approve in recent months out of, uh, five unions that we negotiate with. Both three down and two to go. And the first three have all been settled under very similar.
Thank you, Bob. Any further comments? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8612 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8613 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract or contracts for the renovation of the Nature Center at Winter Garden St. John's Nature Preserve and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 8614 for first reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.03, 150.37C, 150.45C, and 150.59A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding vocation, training, school use in the city's zoning code. Legislation for second reading, Resolution Number 3670 for second reading, resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, the submittal of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a 5339B and 5339 grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit law and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2018 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and executing contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Resolution Number 3671 for second reading, resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the BG Transit Program. Resolution Number 3672 for second reading, resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG Transit drug and alcohol testing policy. Ordinance Number 8606 for second reading, ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. I believe we need to do a, a third reading because it needs to go to the county auditor prior to our next meeting.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. McCumber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8606 its third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8606.
Ordinance Number 8606 for third reading, ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment.
President.
Mr. McCumber.
Adopt ordinance 8606.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8606 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8609 for second reading, ordinance accepting easement from Nathan M. Bernath and Emily Bernath for purposes of installing a streetlight at 1159 Dakota Court. Ordinance Number 8610 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer the former Manville Water Tower properties to Habitat for Humanity. Ordinance Number 8611 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 94.05B of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding refuse and recycling collection. Legislation for third reading, Resolution Number 3668 for third reading, resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2018.
Mr. President.
Mr. McCumber.
Move to adopt Resolution 3668.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3668 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8596 for third reading, ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 60.102 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio from RJ Carpenter Family Limited Partnership petitioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8596.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay.
Yeah, I just, uh, want to point out that this is, uh, this is a very fortunate annexation. Um, this is going to be a, a good boon to our economy. It's going to bring some jobs. It's going to bring some industries. It's going to allow space for some of our existing manufacturers to possibly expand. We can hope for that. Um, and I'd like to just thank Sue Clark, who works very hard in, in making these things happen. I know she doesn't do it alone, but, uh, you're very integral to all this and you do a great job and means a lot to us. So thank you.
Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. Ordinance 8596 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8597 for third reading, ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 43.03 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio from Susan J. Reagan, trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust petitioner.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8597.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8597 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8598 for third reading, order, ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 0.50 acres of land in plain township, Wood County, Ohio from Sandra K. Miller petitioner.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8598.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8598 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8599 for third reading, ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Worcester Street as petitioned for by RJ Carpenter Family Limited Partnership.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8599. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8599 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8600 for third reading, ordinance establishing interim zoning of M3 business park zoning for the property recently annexed to the city located on East Poe Road as petitioned for by Susan J. Reagan trustee of Harold F. Miller Living Trust.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8600.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8600 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8601 for third reading, ordinance establishing interim zoning of R2 single family residential zoning for the property located at 16471 Brim Road and recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Sandra K. Miller.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8601.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8601 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8602 for third reading, ordinance accepting a utility easement from Bowling Green Lodge LLC.
I move to adopt ordinance 8602. Tag it.